Well, thank you very much, everybody. I want to call this city council meeting to order along with the other agencies. And in our normal tradition, we'll begin with the invocation and the pledge allegiance. So I want to ask the city clerk to please announce those individuals.
Tonight's invocation is scheduled to be Pastor Donald Rucker of the Christian Development Center, and the pledge will be led by Councilmember Martinez. And I'm still trying to ascertain whether Pastor Rucker is on the call.
Okay, we'll give you a give you a couple of minutes to figure it out.
Okay, I've allowed the two phone numbers on the line have the ability to unmute themselves. If one of those is Mr. Rucker, could you press star six to unmute?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
All right, so let's do this. Let's have everybody please stand up and we'll start the invocation. Anytime you're ready, Pastor Rucker.
All right, good evening, everyone. Well, Father God, we just acknowledge your sovereignty and the source of our life. And we pray that tonight, Lord God, for this council, for these men and women, that you would give them the insight and wisdom, Lord God, to govern this city and the citizens of this city. We pray, Father, for your wisdom, because you have said, if any of us lack wisdom, let us ask of you. And so tonight, we ask God that you would impart the necessary and essential wisdom, Lord God, so that these men and women that you have entrusted this city and the citizens of this city to their care, that God, that you impart that wisdom, so that they can make the right decision in every given moment. And Father, we want to thank you for them, and we pray for them tonight, and we hold them up before you, and we ask in Jesus' name that as you watch over them, that you will also watch over their families, you will protect them, Lord God, and keep them safe. In the precious name of the Lord Jesus Christ, we pray tonight. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Please have roll call.
Councilmember Lopez.
Here.
Councilmember Martinez.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
I'm here.
Mayor Protem Ru.
Present.
Mayor Dutre.
Present.
Thank you.
This evening, we have one presentation to recognize an organization for their efforts on the COVID-19 efforts. And this is again, the community recognition award for COVID-19. So this evening, we're going to recognize organization called Love for Humanity. I believe, is Bill? Are you on the line, Bill? Can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. And for being on the line this evening, but to just talk a little about Love for Humanity, they've been a long partner with local churches to help support local food pantries. And since last March, which is the start of the pandemic, Love for Humanity has shifted its distribution in collaboration with our Laylord Church here in Montclair to have bulk food delivery from our Laylords to other churches. In addition to that, here at our Laylord's Love for Humanity's distribution has been assisting probably on the average lately of 50 families per week here in Montclair. In addition to that, the Love for Humanity staff picks up and distributes food to programs and support such as a Friday food, Friday food backpack program and also their homeless feeding program. And then lastly, food stuff supplied by Love for Humanity are made available through our Laylord Church in Montclair to Saint Anthony's Church in Upland and also other distribution sites of churches in Upland, Ontario, and Fontana. So, Bill, I wanted to say thank you for your hard work efforts to, not only to help families out in our region, but also to be present here in the city of Montclair. I know you make a lot of families very happy. We will give you a certificate of recognition award. This is just a copy of it, but we'll have a live event where you can kind of have your picture taken, and I'll personally give you the certificate of recognition. But nevertheless, Bill, you have something I'd say about your organization.
We're just very grateful to have been working with our Lady of Lords and the City of Montclair. It's been since 2013 that we started this whole program, and it's just grown. And we've had great support with the city and with the church and also with the school district. We do a backpack program in the schools with school supplies and food for the weekend. We do it at three three schools in the Montclair area, and then we also do it in Ontario, and we also do it out in Riverside. So we basically started here and been able to expand with the support that you all have given us. So we're very appreciative. And we really would like to thank you for this award, and we're very grateful. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you very much again, and very well deserved. And again, we will schedule a live event for us to get together.
Oh, wonderful. It'd be great to meet you.
Oh, great. I'm not sure any of my councilmembers have anything to say. Do I see any hands going up? Mayor. Go ahead, Councilmember Lopez.
Sir, how do you pronounce your last name?
Lorette.
Lorette. Mr. Lorette, thank you for your contribution to the community and helping us at such a difficult time. You're doing God's work. Keep it up. Very, very kind of you. God bless you a hundredfold, and hopefully we will meet you soon.
Wonderful. So, Bill.
Mayor Protem Ru.
Yes, thank you. Let me lower my hand, too. Mr. Lorette, I think it's wonderful what you're doing. You're helping the people of this community. I believe fully that our mission as human beings and mine as an elected official is to devote ourselves to the last, the least, the lost, and the lonely. And that's what you're doing through your work, and it's so appreciated. There are many people who may never, ever think they'll need something. But if they do, I know you'll be there for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, again, thank you very much, and again, we will schedule another date to personally meet you. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
At this time, we are now under public comment. Members of the public want to speak, they can either raise their hand if they're on a laptop or a desktop, or they can go on their phone. I believe they'll hit star six if they wish to speak, or star nine. And then if you wish to mute yourself, you'll hit either star six or star nine on the phone. So, city clerk, do you have anybody that submitted that request to speak or any written comments?
Yes, I have two requests to speak, and both are in the audience. The first one is Carolyn Raft, and the second one is Rob Piperzky.
Okay, so we will start with the first person, Carolyn Raft. Carolyn, hello, how you doing?
Thank you. I'm here. Thank you very much. I'm here.
I know the rules are, you have five minutes.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, I want to say that I'm very, very thankful that Mr. Starr is our city manager. He's done such an excellent job and handled the COVID crisis better than, in my opinion, anyone else that could. Unfortunately, with the mall and so many other businesses closing down during this time, and unfortunately, a lot of them will not be able to stay in business, and that hits our city budget drastically. In order for cities to survive, they need a good city manager such as we have. So, good job, Mr. Starr. I am sure everyone appreciates you as much as I do. Secondly, Mr. Lopez, when you're in office of government, one thing you have to be, get used to is criticism. When I first got elected, I had a lot of unpleasant comments from residents, including some from yourself. Other thing is that you are not going, if you're not going to vote for something, it's your duty to let your constituents and your fellow council members know why and not keep everyone in suspense. I myself wish to know why you did not vote on the budget. That was very time-consuming and considerate with what Mr. Starr and the department heads have to work with. You must remember, all departments in the city are important, no matter what division they are, and not just single out one department because you promised them something you can't deliver. I have never, in all my 28 years, promised something I knew I couldn't deliver without having the other council members agree. Remember always, it takes three votes to pass, not one. So yes, in my opinion, it was a stupid thing you did by not passing or at least giving a reason as to why you didn't. It is your right, of course, to vote yes or no, but please give a reason. As long as you're on the council, you had better get used to criticism to what you do or say that's not reasonable, because people will speak up and criticize, and is there every right, is every citizen it is in the United States to give their opinion. So thank you very much. I'm finished.
Well, thank you, Ms. Raft. Next speaker, I believe, is Rob Piperzky. Are you there, Rob? Hello?
Yeah.
How about now? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Rob. You have five minutes. Go ahead.
I want to thank the city council and the mayor for this opportunity to speak to this body tonight. This is the first opportunity since the election on November 3rd. My bid for city council was unsuccessful, but provided me a great learning experience as I begin to explore the possibility of running for mayor in the next election. By the next election, I will be retired from my current position with the city and will be able to devote full time to my campaign and the citizens of Montclair. Now, for the reason I chose to speak tonight. I have been employed by this city for now 41 years and was excited that Measure L had passed and become law. The city of Montclair is in an employment crisis as we continue to lose people to other cities. As employees of this city, we are required to do more with less and are reaching a breaking point. Measure L is a general use tax and not earmarked for any specific program, department, or issue. The funds will begin to be collected beginning April 1st and will go into the general fund. When I ran for city council, a significant issue for me was bringing all employees to parity with like in surrounding cities. I cannot tell this council or its managers how to run this city or spend its money. As a citizen, I can make suggestions from a unique perspective, being both an employee and a resident. From the city manager to the maintenance workers at City Yard, all of city employees must be brought to an average salary via a salary survey. This city can no longer be the lowest paid in the region or county, spending hundreds of thousands of dollars replacing employees lost to other cities. Many think employee groups have collective bargaining to determine salaries and benefits. We have members who serve on negotiating committees, but no negotiating ever really takes place. An employee group will ask for wages and benefits, but are routinely told there is not enough money to meet your demands. All we can do is try to get a little extra, and we are told what the city will give us, which is still leaves us, for the most part, the lowest paid. In a collective bargaining situation such as auto workers, supermarkets, the workers can engage in job actions to bring about change. We, as public employees, are prohibited by law from engaging in any type of job actions. Not to mention, it is immoral and unethical for us to engage in such activities against the citizens of our city. The fairest way to determine wages and benefits for government employees is to create a fair and equitable salary survey agreed upon by the city and its employee groups. It is my hope we can move towards that goal now and not have it as some lofty goal far into the future. In the interim, before the next negotiations, I would hope we could use city reserve funds to give a stipend to all employees, bringing them to average or near average salaries for this year. I know the reserve funds will need to be replaced, and they can be replenished using the general fund. As I said, Measure L will begin putting money into the general fund. Business is down right now through no fault of the city, but it is because of COVID-19 shutdowns. Business is and will begin to pick up in the future, and Measure L will eventually contribute $7 to $14 million to the general fund. Throughout my employment with the city, I was always told salaries and benefits would be increased if we had a sustainable funding source. With Measure L funds, we now have that sustainable funding source. Montclair is growing, and we need to have personnel and equipment in place for our population as it begins to grow. We must be ready now and not try to catch up later. Infrastructure also needs to be considered as we prepare for our future. I listen to the mid-year budget, and I support wholeheartedly the bond measure for city projects, which will be repaid by Measure L at approximately $2.5 to $2.7 million per year until the loan is paid. Let us move forward now as we move to the future. When I sit there and talk about salaries, we have lieutenants in our department that earn as much or less than corporals in another department, and we lose a firefighter to Chino, who as a firefighter will earn more than a battalion chief. These things need to be rectified as soon as possible. We cannot sustain this much longer. I will not benefit, for I will be retired and not be able to get the benefits of the salary surveys. But our employees need to have it in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other members of the public who wish to speak? City clerk?
I see a hand just went up from Cynthia Rojas.
Okay, Cynthia will be our last speaker for tonight. Cynthia, you can mute yourself. And Cynthia, you have five minutes.
Excuse me, that was an error. Sort of like a butt dial.
Oh, no problem. Then we'll take you off. No problem. Okay, at this time, public comment is ended, and we will now head out to consent calendar. And we have about six items under consent calendar, seven items, excuse me. Do any members of the council wish to pull a consent counter item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I'm looking for my note. Hold on, sir. Item B, like boy two.
B two, okay. Anybody else wish to pull an item on the opposite center calendar? No? I'm going to pull.
Mayor, this is Bill Ru. I'll make a motion for the consent calendar as amended tonight with item B two being pulled.
Let's do this first. I'm also going to pull item B one, C one, excuse me. And then if there's concurrence, we'll go ahead and make one motion for the entire consent calendar. So we'll start with item B two.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. A question to perhaps the department head or the city manager. I understand that we are, as the report states, basically vacating two positions on the books and using the allocated money for those two positions to fund this position. The base pay for this position in step A of the salary schedule starts at $6,777. What is the, how did staff go about determining that base pay? Was there any comparison to comparable positions in other cities nearby or in the region? Do we already have someone in mind for this position, or will there be a posting of it being available? And what, I'm just trying to determine the exact need for doing so.
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, this will be an open recruitment, so anyone can apply for the position. Employees in the organization can apply, or anyone from the outside. City staff has no prior commitment to any particular individual. In fact, we don't believe that there's anyone else in the organization who is trained or has the qualifications for this position. So it is unexpected that there will be anyone inside who will apply for the position. This will be likely an individual from the outside, probably someone who has recently graduated from college with the specific requirements as specified in the job description for the position. As it relates to determining the salary, whenever there is a new position that is created for the organization, there is always a salary survey conducted of surrounding cities to determine what a potential salary would be for the position. Of course, this relates only to wages, not to benefits. Benefits are a negotiated issue exclusive to the particular bargaining group, but the salary, obviously, at the time of creation, is subject to examination based on the results of a salary survey with the agencies that are selected as part of our survey group. I believe that answers the bulk of your questions. I think the remaining question was, what was the need for this position? The need is actually very great, the fact that we have two positions in the NPDS and the sewer program that are vacated. There is a need in the organization to address those positions. So we are doing a further reorganization in which we are reassigning many of those duties to an existing employee, taking duties away from that employee and moving many of those duties to this new position. This new position will actually be an individual who has engineering experience as well as a degree, so that that person can serve as an aide to the city engineer, public works director, in all of the different projects that he works on. He does not currently have an assistant in the organization who has any engineering experience, so it all falls on his shoulders. This also gives us an opportunity to address any potential to move this position up in the organization and perhaps even be considered for the city engineer, public works director after the current incumbent considers requiring in the next, retiring in the next 10 years or so, based on on his personal schedule. But there is again, a need for the position in the organization, one, so that we can pick up the responsibilities related to the two positions that have been vacated in those two programs that I identified, and so that we can get this individual trained in those areas, in project management, and in the engineering tasks that the city is undertaking. And as the council well knows, we are looking at a number of infrastructure projects related to a potential bond measure, and that, the implementation of all of those different projects will require the assistance of support personnel in the engineering division, so that we can move forward, not only from a project management perspective, but in looking at all of the different projects that we are going to be pursuing, looking at the proposals submitted by the various vendors, and determining what the requirements for each of the projects will be. And that would be an opportunity to get this individual experienced in those areas, again, so that he can move up into the organization and assume greater authority, as well as providing support to the existing city engineer.
All right. I don't doubt the need for the position. I'm comfortable with the need for the position. I believe the report says there will be an estimated net savings of $49,000, just shy of $50,000 annually. I just have a problem, and again, this goes back to just where I come from, ever since being elected, that other areas within our organization and structure are worthy of adequate pay as well. We're going to start off this position with $6,700 a month. And based upon the pay schedule that we adopted in January, we have, for example, a firefighter doesn't reach $6,700 at all on these pay scale police officers. They have to wait at least till step C to reach the $6,700 we're giving this position. And it kind of guess piggybacks on some of the comments that Mr. Piperzky mentioned in his public comments. I think we need to be a little bit equitable with pay and give some concern to other positions just based on need. I'm glad to see or hear that a salary survey was done with respect to the engineering position, and I would like to see the salary surveys done for police and fire going forward, since we're obviously doing it for engineering position. I just think that that'd be appropriate. But I, if I could split my vote, I would do it, but I'm uneasy just given the pay schedule. I know that it's based on a salary survey of nearby agencies and cities, but I can't, I can't pull the trigger on this one. So to the resident that complained about explaining my vote, there it is on this one. Take notes.
Let me interject here. We're not talking about police and fire salaries.
I understand that.
That's a major discussion that we have closed session later this evening. I'm not sure if that's part of the closed session discussion or not. This is a position for assistant engineer, and that's being discussed this evening. That's on the agenda for consideration. So I do trust that staff has gone ahead and done the, done their evaluation in terms of of a salary comp of other cities. So if you're going to vote no, that's fine. And then I think I'll just have Mr. Ru, if you want to make a motion for approval on this, Mr. Ru?
Yes, I will make a motion for the consent calendar as presented this evening.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
Well, Mr. Mayor, point of order, did you pull item C one? Are we doing the whole thing, or are we just doing?
We're going to take, since you're going to, the Cynthia on this item here, we'll take a vote on this item right now. And then when we get to the rest of the calendar, we'll take a vote on it.
Okay, that's fine.
Just to be clear on the vote, be clear on the vote. Is there a second to the motion?
My motion was for the consent calendar. Are you asking me? Okay, I made the motion for item.
Let's take an action on this item only right now.
I will make a motion for item B two.
Okay, is there a second for item B two? I'll second the motion. So will the city clerk please take roll call?
Councilmember Lopez.
No.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ru.
Aye.
Mayor Dutre.
Aye. Okay, so that's adopted four to one. In regards to item C one, this is the agreement with the Montclair League and the Golden Girls Softball League for use of the ball fields, both burning and also at Kingsley and also at Saratoga. Two weeks ago, when we met, we had a nice discussion about parks, and we will have the discussion further in April. Nevertheless, there were some comments made by the, in this case, I believe, representatives of the Montclair League about the ability to practice and also to play regular season games. Since then, the governor, state of California, and the governor have updated their guidelines in terms of youth sports. And part of that is that it appears that we may be in the red tier soon in the county of San Bernardino. So I'm very proud of the fact that our staff has worked with the, both the Golden Girls League and also the Montclair Little League to work in a way where we can at least open these parks up for youth activities. So I understand by the adoption of these two agreements, if both leagues meet the protocol requirements for COVID-19, if the county of San Bernardino is in the red tier, then we are able to move forward with baseball and softball in our Montclair parks. And in addition to that, our staff is committed, and we did that last Wednesday, when we appropriated additional funds for park maintenance. And so our staff is committed to get the fields, the baseball fields and the softball field ready for practices, the scrimmages, or for the actual league games. I believe, I understand, at least for the little Montclair Little League, I believe it's district set, if I'm correct. They're still trying to decide if they'll start a season, hopefully as early as April. I know our staff is communicating with that district to determine if league play will begin. Nevertheless, I want to say this. In a year since COVID-19 started, it's been a year since this pandemic. In a year since COVID-19 started, it's been a year since this pandemic has closed schools and, in class schools and parks, and I can tell you, Little League, I remember a year ago, last first Saturday in March a year ago, going to the Little League opening, only to see that the following Saturday, things began to close down. So I'm very happy and excited that we are finally able to start having outdoor youth activities, not just in the city of Montclair, but in our region. Our kids need this, and I'll talk about schools a little later in the agenda. I'm not sure, any other comment? Councilor Martinez, go ahead.
Yeah, this is a contentious issue, whether to open up the parks, and I really want to commend the city manager and staff, and I'm sure our city attorney had a hand in this as well. But to come up with an agreement that everyone's happy with in only a two-week period, I also want to commend the Montclair Little League for being so understanding. That's just, it's astounding, and I think it really goes to show how our city really does care about its residents, that they're willing to come up with an agreement that is this detailed and thorough in the short period of time that they were able to do that.
Great, thank you. Anybody else want to speak?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Counselor Lopez.
No, I would concur with the comments both by you, Mr. Mayor, and Councilwoman Martinez. I read the agreement, and I noticed that a lot of the terms of the agreement basically come out of the California Department of Health. I am glad to see that recommendations or issues regarding testing are encouraged and voluntary, and they're not mandated upon either coaching staff or students, I'm sorry, or players. You likely will find me part of the league coaching again with the team, so I do appreciate that. And I say that as a high-risk individual medically, so I do appreciate that. And it's great to see that indeed, in just two weeks, the numbers have continued to drop, and the trend has continued to drop. I pulled some of the statistics again, and from the week ending February, excuse me, 13th through the prior week, the 6th, the 13th being the most recent data that has been compiled by our county for Ontario-Montclair residents, that includes children but adults. Child cases, this reporting period, we're at 26. Total human cases were at 204. The week prior, which is the week after our last council meeting, they were at 65 child cases and 432 adult cases, or cubilative cases, rather. That is a drop of 39 child cases and a drop of 228 human adult cases in our area. And again, that's taking account all of Ontario and Montclair, so the likelihood of those numbers applying to our city are even smaller, given that Ontario is much greater in population than we are. So I just can see, I see this as positive. It'll be great to see the kids back on the field. It's my understanding that maybe in two, three weeks, maybe a month from now, we will see kids back in school in some type of fashion in a hybrid situation, but there'll be a mix of in-person or via Zoom as they currently are. But this is a great move. It is something that I saw it coming. I spoke about that last meeting, and it's great. So let's, as they say in ball, let's play ball.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see anybody else. So at this time, I'm going to ask, we have a motion for the remainder of the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the?
Mr. Rue, I'll make a motion.
We have Councilmember Lopez made the first motion, and second by Mayor Potem Rue. Can I please have roll call?
Councilmember Lopez.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Potem Rue.
Aye.
Mayor Dutre.
Aye. So that's unanimously adopted. The next item on the agenda is business item to consider direction staff related to Assembly Bill 571. Is there someone on staff going to do a presentation on this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This, of course, is a discussion issue for members of the city council. You recall that effective January 1, 2021, Assembly Bill 571 established the default campaign contribution limit for cities and counties. That limit is $4,900 per person per election, adjusted in each odd-numbered year. Sponsors of the bill have said that the purpose of introducing the bill was to eliminate the risk of actual or perceived corruption at the local government level. Cities and counties may, however, adopt their own higher or lower contribution limits by resolution or ordinance. Staff would recommend that the process, if you're going to do that, be a resolution. If it's going to be an unlimited, which is what we are currently using, however, an ordinance, if you are going to put restrictions on the amount of contributions, because then it would have to be enforced and administered at the local level, and therefore, we would require an ordinance to establish the very civil, various civil and criminal penalties that may be associated with any violations related thereto. In adopting a limit, of course, as I indicated, the city may adopt enforcement standards, and you would have to do that if you are going to go the route of adopting specific limits that are different than what are proposed under AB 571. Prior to the default limit of AB 571, the city did not have a contribution limit. The city council should now decide to remain either with the AB 571 default, or take no action, or provide direction to draft an ordinance or resolution to set local contribution limits. The contribution limits may be higher or lower than that that are proposed under, that are already provided for under AB 571. But imposing no limit, keep in mind that that would be in keeping with the city's past practice. We have not had a limit on the contributions up until the implementation of AB 571 effective January 1, 2021. If no limit resolution ordinance is adopted, the FPPC will remain the responsible enforcer and administer of the limits. If the council takes no action, again, AB 571 limits will apply, and the FPPC will remain the responsible enforcer and administer of the limits. If the council takes no action, AB 571 limits, again, will apply, and violations and will be, violations will be punishable as a misdemeanor and local fines as established by the FPPC. If AB 571 also contains other provisions, I'm sorry, AB 571 also contains other provisions, and those are indicated on page 99 and 100 of the agenda report. The agenda report also includes a pie chart that shows 2020 contributions to Montclair City Council candidates. There could be, as far as the fiscal impact, there could be significant cost to the general fund if the city is required to administer and enforce contribution limits that are separate than those contained in IAB 571. However, if the council adopts no limits, then there would be no cost impacts on the general fund, or if you remain with the limits established by AB 571, again, there would be no cost impacts on the city's general fund. Staff recommends the council provide direction to the city staff to either bring back an ordinance or resolution determining the preferred campaign contribution limits, or setting no limits and adopting an administration and enforcement mechanism if required, should the city council decide to adopt contribution limits that are different than AB 571, or take no action, thereby allowing the default limits of AB 571 to remain in effect in the city of Montclair.
Very much, staff. Who wants to go first among the council? Any hands? Anybody want to speak? Want to go first? Mr. Rue? No?
Just a moment.
Councilmember Johnson, you want to go? Oh, Mr. Mayor Potem Rue, go ahead. You can lead off then.
I'm looking at this, and I don't know if we have a problem. We've had elections, we've never really had to have campaign contribution limits, and our elections have worked out just fine.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson, I believe you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did have a question, which was answered by City Manager Starr. I kind of am thinking, I believe, the same way as Mayor Potem Rue. We've been fine before, and I know that this is an assembly bill that we need to follow. But my question was, if we accept the limits as listed in the bill, then there's no fiscal impact to the city? That was my question, and Mr. Starr already answered that. So I think it just makes sense for us to accept what the state has.
Okay, so, and then Councilmember Lopez.
I initially had brought this up back in December, because I saw kind of the writing on the wall with it. What, there is a danger in accepting the limits that the state is now imposing on localities, and Mr. Starr touched on that, and that is the FPPC becomes the enforcer of the new campaign limits, and it takes that authority away from our city clerk, and it kind of ties the hand of our city clerk. I've always believed that our folks at the local level know best than those at the county and above, and I would think that, one, we would, I just take offense to the state dictating to us limits that we should have. If we accept those limits, the issue then becomes who then scrutinizes the forms, determines who's out of compliance, collects the fines, and all of the necessary paperwork, if you will, to manage and enforce that, and that would impose an unnecessary burden on the city clerk. I did pull the last campaign statements from the last election and their public record. Everyone well knows who ran in those elections, who the candidates were. Myself, for, just so everybody knows, I'll be the first candidate up, spent $13,000, and $13,400. Last, another candidate, only spent, Ms. Orozco, about $1,500, $2,000 in the whole entire race. Mr. Pipirskey, I believe, was, based on the last report for the year ending December 31st, reported $6,400. Ms., my goodness, Orozco, I'm sorry, Mr. Miranda, I believe, spent between the two campaigns roughly about $9,000, $10,000, and Ms. Johnson was at about $16,000. So is there a huge influx of outside sources coming and dumping money into Montclair politics? Absolutely not. And you'd have to go way back to 2012, when a very high number, number of dollars were spent in a campaign for city council races, anywhere from $30,000 to $60,000. That was the last time that had happened. The system here in Montclair works. I would encourage my colleagues for us to keep the current system that Montclair had in place until we didn't, based on this new law, and that is, any donation over $100 is fully reported. That is, we identify the donor, the date, and their address and occupation. Anything that is over $1,000 within the 60-day window, I believe, before the election, is reported in a 24-hour report, and we follow the calendar of state reporting for semi-annual statements, pre-election statements, and so forth. And in so doing, we then get rid of any unnecessary new requirements. We do have the flexibility of adopting an ordinance, saying we shall not have any limits, which I would be in favor of, but I would also say that we will follow the current extent of reporting that we currently are all under, and that would be ideal, and I think that addresses the problem, and then it gets us out from under the requirements of AB 571. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Martinez, you're next.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, as Councilmember Lopez pointed out, I think that allowing the default campaign limits to take over would have little to no effect on the way that we have run campaigns in the last, yeah, at least 30-plus years or so. But what I do think that it will do is serve as a protective measure. So for that reason, I would prefer that we take no action.
Thank you. So what I'm hearing is, I believe, Councilmember Rue is take no action, continue as is, Councilmember Rue, is that what you, continue with AB 571 provisions?
No, continue with Montclair as we're doing right now.
AB 571 provisions.
Right.
Okay, so what I hear is, there's at least three councilmembers that want to continue on with the AB 571 provisions, am I correct?
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. A question of Councilman Rue. You want to continue with what is currently in place because of the new law?
In the city of Montclair, the rules we have.
Hold on, because right now, the current practice is the state forced us to adopt these voluntary limits, and then the state doing the enforcement. That's the current policy right now.
No, no, that's not what I mean. I mean, what we've had in place in 2020, it works.
So you're speaking of the pre-AB 571 rules, pre-rules of prior to January 1, 2021?
I'd just like to clarify that if you wanted things to be how they were pre-AB 571, you would need to adopt no limits specifically.
I said earlier, you know, we've never had a problem with limits. It doesn't affect us. We, you know, I don't think we've had huge infusions of money coming from outside sources. At least I haven't seen that.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think we need limits.
So the city clerk, I think we have three options. The first option is take no action, and the current default limit, which right now is $4,100, stays in place as adopted by AB 571. The second option is we can come up with a new limit, campaign limit, which is greater or less of the $4,100 amount. Difference is also the city clerk's office will have to enforce it. And the third option is that we can have no campaign limits, as was in the case prior to January 1, 2021, and obviously, obviously, there's no enforcement involved. Am I correct, city clerk?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. All right, so.
Wait a second. Mr. Mayor, if I may, there is enforcement, enforcement is by the FPPC.
I'm sorry?
There is enforcement if you adopt no limits, but the enforcement is by the FPPC.
Yeah, FPPC is still.
There's no limits to enforce, though, so that's the thing, is no one would be policing limits.
Right, you still require, you still require complete forms, do the 460 forms and other documents.
Right, administration and enforcement, correct.
Okay, so I also don't think we should have no limits. We haven't had any limits in Montclair since I've been here on the city council for 24 years. I have a kind of a theory, but it's not broken. Why fix it? I know that one of the threats, especially for elected officials, is independent expenditure committees, and those have, I've seen more and more of the independent expenditure committees in this region, and if you don't know what that is, is it's outside, organizations can develop these committees to either support or go against candidates, and there is no limit in the amount of monies they can contribute to or receive, and then obviously, there's no limit to how much money they can expend against candidates. And so my concern is that if you have, if candidates are limited in how much money they can receive, and you have an independent expenditure committee opposing you for office, then as a candidate for office, you're kind of hamstrung in terms of trying to raise money. So I will, I support continuing on with the no limits that we had prior to AB 571 going into place. I believe I hear three councilmembers support no campaign limits, but I think what I do is maybe.
I don't want any limits, so.
Okay, I think what we need to do is, we need to have a motion to make sure it's real clear what this council wants to do and direct staff.
I'll make a motion that we have no limits.
You have a motion to make no limits, and that essentially will be in place as we were prior to, prior to January 1, 2021, am I correct?
Correct.
Your motion?
Correct.
Is there a second to the motion?
A second.
There's a second by Councilmember Johnson to the motion. There's, there's a second by Councilmember Johnson to, to the motion.
Mr. Mayor, point of order.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Lopez.
Just a point of order. I want to make clear that the motion in the second is, is this. What we're directing staff to do is to draft a resolution, because that's what's required of us, announcing that we will not have limits in the city of Montclair.
Right.
That enforcement will still lie with our city clerk.
To the. Enforcement, if there's no limits on campaign contribution, what's the city clerk?
Well, here's why. If there is a late report submitted in the city clerk's office, there is a ten dollar fee that the city clerk can, can levy on the candidate or council member. If there is a late report brought in, there's a threshold for that. I just want to make sure that the authority rests with our city clerk, and it does not come
Yes.
from above.
All right, city clerk.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, if I may, Mr. Mayor, if I may, you cannot supersede the authority of the state as it relates to their administration enforcement under law as it relates to no limits ordinance or resolution that you adopt. The only way that you can avoid state administration enforcement is to adopt your own limits.
Yes, I believe City Manager Starr, the city clerk or city clerk Phillips, want to chime in. The only role the city clerk will be is to receive documents, four sixty documents and other documents, for ten forms, receive those forms.
And actually, the, the fines on those, as the filing officer, the city would get those fines. It doesn't really matter whether or not the state's enforcing the actual limits.
Is that the current process?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's all I want to know. As long as your authority isn't totally usurped here.
Thank you.
And one question I have, since we're still discussing the motion, we can either have no limits based on a resolution or an ordinance. Am I correct there, City Manager Starr?
Yes, but if you're not going to do any enforcement because you're not adopting limits, then I would suggest a resolution, because you don't have to come up with fines and penalties related to civil or criminal actions.
I just, and I'll be a one-city council action meeting then. Okay. All right, so we have a motion on the floor. The motion again is to direct staff to bring back a resolution of no limits for campaign contributions as, as currently applied by A B five seven one. Is he, please take roll call.
Councilmember Lopez.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Rue?
Aye.
Mayor Dutre?
Aye.
So that item is adopted to four to one. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is council workshops. And we have one item, which will be this coming Wednesday, March third, at six P M, to update the House element of the general plan. This meeting will also include the Plaque Commission, to be a joint meeting of the Plaque Commission. So is there a motion to, to hold this meeting?
I make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor Potem Rue was first, and Councilmember Johnson, the second motion. Please take roll call.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Rue?
Aye.
Mayor Dutre?
Aye, so that's adopting unanimously. You now enter under communications, and I'll start with the city attorney.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor. I just have the one item as indicated on the agenda, and that's to ask that the council meet in closed session regarding labor negotiations with our designated labor negotiator, Mr. Starr, regarding the associations listed in the agenda. Other than that, I have nothing else this evening.
Thank you. City Manager Starr, do you have any communication?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, I do have quite a few COVID nineteen update items to report to you. As of today, the United States is reporting nearly twenty-nine million confirmed COVID nineteen cases and five hundred and twenty thousand deaths. California is reporting approximately three point five seven million cases and fifty-two thousand deaths. San Bernardino County is reporting two hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred and seven cases and two thousand eight hundred and seventy-four deaths. And in Montclair, there are five thousand nine hundred and ninety-two reported cases and eighty-seven deaths. San Bernardino County reports a case rate of fifty, fifty-three point six per one hundred thousand. That's an unadjusted number, and it has a four point, four point five percent positivity rate, and the ICU bed availability is at thirty-one point seven percent. The county does remain under the purple tier, which is the widespread risk tier. Health metrics for San Bernardino County have not sufficiently improved to warrant migrating out of the substantial risk tier, out of the widespread risk tier into the substantial risk red tier. And we do not expect that to occur until the end of March at the very earliest. To advance through the blueprint, the county needs two consecutive weeks of a seven-day adjusted case rate of between four and seven daily new cases per one hundred thousand residents. A positivity rate between five percent and eight percent, and a health equity rate between five point three percent and eight percent. By graduating to the red tier, more businesses, including Montclair's AMC Theater, can reopen under modified operating guidelines, and dining can move indoors. City buildings would also open after the county remains in the red tier for two consecutive weeks. Much of the county's improvement is attributed, in part, to the availability of vaccinations, particularly for vulnerable groups. As of today, San Bernardino County Health Department estimates that three hundred and sixty, three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight vaccines have been administered to county residents, including two hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred and six first doses and one hundred, ten thousand, two hundred second doses, and two thousand, one hundred and forty-two unspecified doses. That represents about sixteen percent of the population of San Bernardino County. Statewide, California has administered nine point one million vaccinations. The vaccination coverage rate in Montclair, as reported by the county dashboard, is between five point five percent and nine point nine percent. However, that data is suspect because municipal-specific information on the county dashboard appears to be inaccurate. The Biden administration, I'm sorry, the Biden-Harris administration has also announced FDA approval of the Johnson and Johnson vaccine, with first shipments rolling out this morning. According to testing data, the Johnson and Johnson vaccine has an eighty-four percent efficacy rate at preventing illness and hospitalization related to COVID nineteen. And the vaccine has demonstrated significant strength against virus variants. The vaccine also requires only one dose, can be stored at regular refrigeration temperatures, and up to eighty million Johnson and Johnson vaccines are estimated to be available within the next several months. California expects to receive approximately one point six million vaccines this week from Moderna and Pfizer, and that will be bolstered by about three hundred and eighty thousand doses of the single-shot Johnson and Johnson vaccine. Blue Shield has now assumed oversight of the vaccination program in San Bernardino County and throughout the state. The contract sets new goals for the state's vaccination program, including vaccinating three million people per week by early March and four million people per week by April thirtieth. Of course, that is all dependent on the available supply. Making vaccines available for ninety-five percent of Californians within thirty minutes in urban areas and sixty minutes in rural areas is also another objective under the contract. Having providers administer ninety-five percent of the doses within one week of receipt and establishing a, in, in the month of March, a monthly vaccination goal of underserved population in the county are the two remaining goals in the contract. Blue Shield will be following state vaccination guidance as it relates to vaccination administration schedules, ensuring that the same eligibility rules will be followed throughout the state of California. Blue Shield will recommend the number of doses in each county be decided based on the requirements for administration. Optimum Serve will be the healthcare operations firm that will be contracted by Blue Shield to assist them with the day-to-day operations of the administration program. And from this point forward, all individuals making scheduled appointments, scheduled appointments need to go through MyTurn, which is a company that has been contracted by the state. To access, you would go to myturn.ca.gov. Again, that is myturn, one word, M Y T U R N dot C A dot gov, or call eight three three four two two four two five five. Again, that is eight three three four two two four two five five to schedule an appointment, and we will post this information on the city's website. Most Californians will be vaccinated at hospitals, community vaccination sites, doctors' offices, clinics, and pharmacies. Vaccinations are currently available for healthcare workers, long-term healthcare residents, individuals sixty-five years of age and older, agriculture and food workers, education and childcare workers, and emergency services, and certain essential class workers. Beginning March fifteenth, healthcare providers may use their clinical judgment to vaccinate individuals ages sixteen to sixty-four who are deemed to be at the very highest risk to get very sick, sick from COVID nineteen because they have severe health conditions. These health conditions include cancer, chronic kidney disease, chronic pulmonary disease, Down's Syndrome, solid organ transplant, sickle cell disease, heart conditions, severe obesity, type two diabetes, and those with a developmental or other severe high-risk disability. A second major factor in transitioning to Blue, uh, Blue Shield is vaccination equity. Throughout the state, the different counties had different vaccination protocol, protocol, and those sometimes led to socially unequitably acceptable vaccination programs. Among those for whom vaccination data is available from the state, sixty percent were non-Hispanic white, eleven point five percent were Hispanic or Latino, five point four percent were black, and six percent were Asian. So this is one of the major reasons why the county, why the state decided to move away from county vaccination programs. Another immediate focus is the vaccination of teachers and education workers to facilitate in-person learning at schools. Pursuant to CDC guidelines, people who have been fully vaccinated against COVID nineteen do not need to quarantine if they become exposed to someone with COVID nineteen and do not develop any symptoms associated with COVID nineteen following exposure during the preceding three months following vaccination. This feeds in part to one of the reasons why they want to get educators vaccinated, so that they can get them back into school, and they don't have to worry about quarantine issues once they are in school, even if they come, become exposed to other individuals in the school environment who may have COVID nineteen. Governor Newsom and state lawmakers did strike a deal this past weekend that would push school districts to open classrooms to the youngest students by the end of March, while stopping short of new requirements regarding vaccines and collective bargaining. The proposal does not require schools to open, but instead offers financial incentives for those that do so. And I do want to point out that O M S D has announced a hybrid in-person learning module beginning April the fifth. The state's deal with the schools would offer two billion dollars in grants to schools that open transitional kindergarten through second grade by the end of March and bring back at-risk students in all grades. That includes districts and counties that are still in the state's purple tier with infection rates higher than what teacher unions previously said are too unsafe for the schools to reopen. Governor Newsom also signed a seven point six billion dollar COVID nineteen relief package that includes six hundred dollars in one-time payment for about five point seven million Californians and another two billion dollars to struggling businesses. State officials project that for the rental assistance program that the state will be offering, there's approximately fifteen percent to twenty percent rate, rent payment deficiency throughout the state of California. The state, along with the federal government, has established this rental funding assistance program that includes a hundred and eight million dollars in total, fifty-six million from the state and fifty-two million from the Biden-Harris administration. The state will administer its program, and counties will administer the federal program. Meanwhile, the one point nine trillion dollar coronavirus relief bill continues to work its way through Congress, and we are still trying to determine what ultimately will be in that package. Finally, San Bernardino County leads the state in filling one hundred percent of available rooms under the state's Project Roomkeep, a program to house the homeless during the pandemic and long-term after the pandemic concludes. Out of the four hundred and twenty-seven rooms secured in San Bernardino County, all four hundred and twenty-seven are occupied. And of these four hundred and twenty-seven rooms, Montclair, out of the twenty-six jurisdictions, has secured space in approximately ten percent of the total. Our compliments to the city's code enforcement unit for their homeless outreach efforts. Several other counties such as San Diego, Los Angeles, San Francisco, Alameda, Santa Clara, and Ventura have secured more Project Roomkeep rooms than San Bernardino County did, but they have not achieved the one hundred percent occupancy. Their occupancy, occupancy rates are in the neighborhood of sixty percent to seventy percent. That concludes my COVID nineteen update this evening.
Thank you very much, City Manager Starr.
Mr. Mayor, real quickly, a question of Mr. Starr, real quickly.
Go ahead.
Mr. Starr, when did you say the AMC Theater could open?
As soon as we're in the red tier. We hope that by early April, presuming that they have hired the necessary personnel to start opening and providing theater services, we expect to see it sometime in April.
And the information in your report that you just gave us, do you have that written down, sir?
I, it will be posted on the city's website, and yes, I do.
Okay.
I will make copies if you would like it.
Yeah, I would. I, I was trying to take notes, but the moment you wouldn't make a good point, I was still writing the other point. I gave up trying, so yes, if I could get that, with this information, I found it very helpful. I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
I will email it to all members of the city council.
Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I want to adjourn this meeting in the memory of Herbert Stamford Kearns. He was a longtime Montclair resident. He was also involved in the Montclair Senior Center. He passed away in early January. So we will, again, adjourn this meeting in his memory. I know that the city manager gave lots of good reports on the coronavirus. As I stated earlier, they're now entering almost one year that the pandemic began. It's been a long one year. I know we're all, all of us retired to the Zoom meetings and obviously staying home more often. And what I want to say to begin with, we have to be cautious these next three, four months. And what I mean by that is, we still have to wear face masks, socially distance, get vaccinated. If you do get vaccinated, you still have to do these precautions. We also have to hope that the variants, UK variant, the, there is a South African variant, do not become much more prevalent. So these two remain threats for possible surges, the next surge. And we have Saint Patrick's Day in two weeks. We have Easter coming up. We have Mother's Day coming up, and we also have Memorial Day coming up. We have a lot of gathering events, traditional gathering events, I should say, that are coming. After all, this is for God's sake and a mile. So we, as a society, and as, have a responsibility to ensure that we continue to recognize that the coronavirus is here, even with the vaccines. I believe with the vaccines, where we are today, I believe by July first, anybody who wants to be vaccinated will, will be able to get vaccinated. Johnson vaccine announced earlier is a game changer. They have two doses, you need one dose. So, you know, I, me and I had last week with the county of San Bernardino through Chairman Hagman, they're expecting to double the number of doses in our county by the end of this month or early April. they're expecting to double the number of doses in our county by the end of this month or early April. And that's just going to gradually grow as we go into the springtime. I mentioned about the schools. Ontario Montclair School Strick is now tentatively looking at starting in-class sessions, a hybrid. So it'll be two days in class, and then, of course, two days at home, and potentially looking at starting school on April the 5th. Obviously, there's a lot of hurdles they have to go through, but they're making an attempt to at least go halfway on the in-class session. That's very encouraging news for our local students, the kids, the parents. And obviously, we want to make sure our teachers are being vaccinated, and they were. As of last Friday, there were Ontario Montclair teachers and other staff members at Montclair Hospital being vaccinated. That's encouraging news. I don't know as far as Montclair High School, the chief joint, I still believe they're in valuation. I did not receive an update from the superintendent's office, but I suspect they're looking at everything very closely as well. I talked about earlier today the parks, having our Little League and our gross softballs backing the action. People want, go back to a normal life. There's no doubt about it. Where's life? Probably normal. But we, again, have a responsibility to ensure that we don't have another surge. So with that, I'm going to move on to Mayor Pro Tem Ru.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Just a moment here. I am unmuted. I'm sorry. I thought I was still muted. Yes, what's been said about coronavirus is true. Even if you receive an inoculation, you need to still practice physical distancing and wearing face coverings and avoiding, when possible, crowded areas. Simply move away, go back when it's less crowded. Because we still don't know enough about all of this. With children going back to school, restaurants reopening, my concern is this could flare up again. So let's exercise common sense. Let's do what we need to do because we don't need this coming back again. Let's turn around and do what we can to help our neighbors. These websites are very good, but they're confusing. I've helped probably as of tonight, a dozen people navigate these websites because they're very complicated. Let's just do what we can and help our neighbors on this. Continue to move forward, and absolutely make sure, if you are able to receive an inoculation, that you receive an inoculation. It's important. I want to, and I know we've got a closed session tonight, but I want to mention that today begins Women's History Month. It has been a date, a month that's been designated as such. And in the past, our legislators have taken to Sacramento outstanding women from their district to be honored for their work. I thought tonight of a woman in history who sometimes was, is forgotten. She is in the National Women's Hall of Fame. She was a co-founder of the National Women's Political Caucus, the co-founder of what was then the Mississippi Freedom Democrats. She was born in 1917 in the Mississippi Delta, the youngest of 20 children of sharecroppers. Her formal education ended at the sixth grade. At that time, she had just only basic knowledge of reading and writing. In that era, as an African-American, education was traditionally denied. And in many parts of the country, women were still denied rights in education. In 1962, Fannie Lou Hamer learned for the first time from some NAACP activists that African-Americans and women could actually vote. She said up until that time, she didn't think women or African-Americans were permitted to vote. After trying to register to vote twice unsuccessfully, because in Mississippi at that time, you had to pass a literacy test. And I have copies of the literacy test, and if somebody wants them, I can get it to them. The third time she was successful, she went to go vote and was told she can't vote because she needed to pay a poll tax. This infuriated her. And she began her civil rights activism by trying to register people to vote, working against literacy provision and working against a poll tax. She was severely beaten and spent two months in a hospital where it damaged her kidneys. She permanently had a ruptured eye with a blood clot on it. In 1964, she was a delegate to the Democratic National Convention. The then-Mississippi delegation, which was all white, did not want to seat her. She said to the President of the United States, Lyndon Johnson, "I'm sick and tired of being sick and tired." At that point, the Mississippi delegation walked out, and she had her victory. She continued to push for rights of African-Americans as well as women. She said, "There's no difference between a Black woman or a White woman. We both need to vote, and we need our rights." She pushed dramatically to extend credit to women regardless of their race. She pushed to have job opportunities for women who were skilled and able to do the job. It was her view that if you can do the job as well as a man, then you should have the right to be able to apply for that job, and if you're the best candidate, to be able to obtain that job. She continued her activism the rest of her life. And in 1977, at the age of 59, she died due to results of breast cancer hypertension and a life of the last few years since '62 of activism. More than 2,000 people attended her funeral, including then-US Ambassador to the United Nations, Andrew Young. He said that without her, we would not be here today. And he was right. She not only stands as an icon for the African-American community, she stands as an icon for women. And right here in Montclair, we have someone who is related to her and can tell her story far better than I ever could, and that's Pastor Donald Rucker. I believe Mrs. Hamer was his aunt. He can tell the story better than I, and it's my hope that at some point in the future, when we have some time at a council meeting, maybe he can tell her story because she's an inspiration to so many people. So as we move into March, look around at some of the women of history who have achieved so much and done so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one comment. For those people, we've been talking about COVID precautions and masks and hand washing and distancing, and everybody's heard that over and over and over. But there are still some people who just don't think it's that serious. Well, let me tell you, I have lost four people in the last two months. COVID is real. I just went to a funeral a week ago. COVID is real, and the person whose funeral it was, I talked to her. And then, three weeks later, somebody called us and said, "Oh, guess what? Marilyn died of COVID." I just, three weeks, I just talked to her. How could that be? It's real. So take the precautions seriously. Wear a mask. I'll be probably wearing a mask when this COVID thing is over. Distance yourself. And make sure that you get your vaccine as soon as you can because we all need to be vaccinated so that we can all be well. COVID is real, and it's serious, and people die. So protect yourself and others. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Councilwoman Martinez.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything tonight, but thank you, Councilmember Ru, for that story. That was wonderful.
Thank you. Councilmember Lopez.
I know we have closed session. I will try to make this quick. Three points. First of all, yes, I was intending to explain my vote from the prior meeting, I believe last Wednesday, with respect to the mid-year budget review. I've had several calls, emails, inquiries from folks tied to the building here, tied to city staff, residents that have inquired as to why. So apparently, word gets around pretty fast. This particular presentation that was given to us that night, I happened to get mine very late and just about 20, 30 minutes before the meeting. And I was going over it through the course of the presentation. What I found was I disagreed with some of the proposed cuts and suggestions in that proposal. But what I was not going to do was is argue with our city manager, finance director, or city staff over the bones of contention I had with respect to some of those cuts to the suggested increases that departments were asking for. So I did that as a courtesy because I hadn't had a prior opportunity to make a phone call or hold a meeting prior to that meeting. So that was the reason why. Now, that said, I know that there are some in the organization here that perhaps are a little uneasy about me or have just, I'm hard to peg, they're hard to read me. I've even heard that I've been dubbed the nickname, and it may not necessarily be, in their eyes, a positive moniker, but nonetheless, I'm being dubbed the fire guy. But I will say, it should be, again, and I shouldn't have to keep justifying this every single time I do an action here in council. It's no secret, public safety is my issue. It always has been, and it probably will be. Not that that is at the expense of other issues important to the city, but public service, I'm sorry, public safety, is something that I've devoted 20-plus years sitting on the other side of this dais, too. And it is something that I intend to work on and try to make an impact as a council member and being elected to this body. So yes, I will push on some public safety issues. I have learned, we are down in our police department. We have issues regarding the need for dispatchers. We have, I touched on this the past two meetings. I am upset that there is a county lateral program being put out there that is possibly going to hurt and take away some of our fire guys. We lost one this last Saturday. I hate that. I want the best and brightest to stay here. They deserve to stay here. They, our residents enjoy our staff, and I hate to see them leave. So darn it, I intend to fight to keep them and end the revolving door and try to bring about some retention. I would concur with the comments made by Mr. Pipirskey earlier and all the points he raised. Perhaps not the reserve issue. We could look into that. I might disagree with him on that. But I think Mr. Pipirskey raises some very valid points. I, two more brief points. I do need to bring up the comments made earlier that I need to take criticism well. I'm not so sure what meeting the former councilwoman has been watching, but I have been attacked for a variety of reasons past council meetings. Not once have I engaged in any disrespectful argument and banter back and forth. I have been very gracious and offering to sit down and chat and have a dialogue with folks that have disagreed with me. So I have taken criticism very well, and I understand it comes with the job. Not everything I do is going to be pleasing to everybody. That's just, if that were the case, then you're doing something wrong. So I take offense to the comment because I've taken it very well. But I will say this, because I was accused that I've attacked the former councilwoman in the past. I may have attacked and criticized your record, public statements, and votes, but I have never, at the podium, while you sat on this dais, attacked you personally and called you derogatory names. You know, hatred corrodes the container it's harbored in. So remember that. For, I believe it was eight election cycles, I was that councilmember's supporter. And it wasn't until 2018 where I had a difference of opinion, and I supported a different candidate for mayor. And ever since then, the relationship, it seems, has soured, and that's sad. But I would remind the person that you are still a representative of this city on a government body. Please act professionally and without name-calling. You can criticize. That's fine. But cut the name-calling. And next time, make sure your mic is off because you got caught, and it's fine. I wish you all the best. I've never disrespected you in any such way. I still don't disrespect you in such way. But if that's how you feel about me, I can't control it. But I do wish you the best, and I always have. And for the record, let it be very clear here. There have been more good times and areas of agreement in our 20-plus-year relationship than there ever has been in our disagreement and in any tough times that we face. So I choose to look at the totality of the good rather than the past two, three years where we've had a disagreement. And my final point kind of piggybacks on what Ms. Johnson said, sorry, Councilwoman Johnson said. On February 19th, we did lose a relative, too, that was COVID-related symptoms. Our fire department took the call, and I'm very grateful for them. And she actually was, those were some of the last folks that she had actually seen were our members of our fire department. But nonetheless, yes, the coronavirus is very real. Those that know me have asked me my opinion on masks and shutdowns and restaurant eatings. I know that we may have disagreements and all. Again, I'm a little bit more hands-off and libertarian in that approach. But it's better to be wise. It's always best to err on the side of wisdom and err on the side of caution. And when in doubt, just be safe. It wouldn't hurt. The consequences are greater than the comfortability of being able to breathe a few seconds without a mask. But at the same time, you know, it's not about government mandates enforced decision-making by government. You got to make your own decisions, and I respect that. But at the same time, we each got to pay the consequences of those decisions. So I would hope that you would be wise. That's why I'm not in favor of mandated vaccines. But for those that choose not to get the vaccines, you know, there is a risk involved. Those that choose to get them, I hope they work, and I hope you're safe. And with that, just hug your loved ones tight because we're not guaranteed tomorrow. And Ms. Johnson just got back from a funeral, and probably in the next month, I will be attending one, unfortunately. So it has hit home, and it's very real for this council. Thank you.
Thank you again. Again, this meeting will be adjourned in the memory of Herbert Stamford Kearns. And we will go into closed session. I'll give, how about two minutes? No closed session. We're okay with two minutes? Okay, so city council is back in open session. I met in closed session regarding late negotiations with the list of bargain units. Information was provided, and there's no further action. So this council is now adjourned. Thank you.
Good night.